I ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the March 20th, 2018 County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter in the white folder. If you need a listening device, Craig can help you with that here at the front table. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minutes from 3/13/2018. Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $449,241.39. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, a couple of things. One is that there's approximately $110,000 in bills for Mr. Burgett in there. And of course, you know, we were charged with defending Mr. Burgett in the murder at the penitentiary since that was in our county. And that's been a couple of years and we're still getting bills. The other thing I wanted to mention is that on our record here, page 15, we have a number of credits coming from the Safe Home, which I think Carol's going to make a comment about. The fact is, we all know that the county has established this residence to care for those that have been living on the street for an extended period of time. But it's not just a handout. We also do our best to collect from their assets. And Carol, do you want to?
Thank you, Commissioner. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, the Safe Home voucher is probably the most interesting voucher that gets done because you notice that there's credits on there. As a matter of fact, when we went to a new software system, I think we had a meeting with about eight people on trying to figure out how to get this done a few years ago. And on those bills, you'll notice, yes, there are credits that are listed. And those are people, we bill one month in advance, but those are people who are paying their rent. And there were 13 credits this month. Five of them are on shelter plus care vouchers. And those are vouchers that are directly for Safe Home. They can't move to any other facility or housing. One person is on a housing voucher and the other people are all direct pay. They have sources of income, including social security. So, yes. So over a third of the people right now are paying their own way. We have resources coming in for that.
Well, thank you, Carol. And I think it is important that we understand that it's not, we're not just handing this stuff out. We are being responsible to the community and also caring for those that seem to have trouble on their own.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion and a second on the bills. If there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, three with one abstention. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for February 2018. Item B is the Register of Deeds official statement of revenue collected for February of 2018. And those are both on file at the Auditor's Office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item six is abatements recommended for approval. Item A is assessment freeze RDID 24339, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $422.67. Olivia.
Yes, as you said, this is for the assessment freeze. It's been recommended for approval in the amount of $422.67 from 2017 RDID 24339.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
There is.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing on April 10th, 2018 for a retail on-sale liquor license application for Blue Haven Barn. Olivia.
Yes, Blue Haven Barn has submitted a application for retail on-sale liquor license. So we are looking to schedule their public hearing and that would be for April 10th if you approve the notice.
Any questions on that?
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish that notice.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the roof replacement repair of the armory building located at the fairgrounds. Mark Krins, good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Director. The roof on the armory building at the fairgrounds is in poor condition and in need of replacement. I've entered into agreement with Structural Engineering Associates to be involved with the project. We have the front-end documents and specifications drafted and approved by the state's attorney. So I'm requesting the commission approval to authorize the auditor to publish notice to bidders for the roof replacement at the armory building at the fairgrounds. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mark?
That would be my motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 636, excuse me, 76366 in the amount of $1,350.10 and DPNO number 94918 in the amount of $244.40.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. The for you is a request to compromise two liens from the same petitioner. DPNO 76366 in the amount of $1,350.10 represents $504.80 of public advocate representation and $845.30 for an IVC court-appointed attorney, along with DPNO 94918 in the amount of $244.40 for IVC court-appointed attorney. The applicant is requesting a compromise and release of both liens in full with no payment. You'll notice that the two IvCs have a significant different amount. The IVC for $244.40 was dismissed by the petitioner. Apparently she had a medical procedure and couldn't drive to Hartford to meet with her attorney and decided that it was too much trouble to meet on a regular basis for the IVC and requested dismissal. The petitioner is not the guardian but cares for her nephew and has for the last 18 years. He is a type 1 diabetic and has required medications, treatment, and has been hospitalized various times for adverse effects with his diabetic medications and substance abuse. The IvCs were an attempt on her part to try and get him some help, which was highly recommended by the doctors. She wasn't aware that she needed to pay for seeking rehabilitation for him. She also believes that she shouldn't be responsible for the public advocate fee because she feels she was wrongly accused by the warrant task force. They were trying to locate a family member and believed she had information on his location. She expressed to them she had no knowledge of his whereabouts and they turned around and apparently placed a warrant on her. So she had to come in, get her prints and photograph and went through the court process. It was recommended by her public advocate that she plead guilty and just pay the fine versus carry this over an extended period of time, incurring more fees. So she did. The petitioner lives in a mobile home that's valued at $3,381. She is currently unemployed and receives social security benefits of $1,592.70 per month. Her assets listed equal $13,181 and her liabilities equal $1,052.
Any questions for Melinda? I don't believe the petitioner is here.
No.
So we will go with commission discussion and motions. Commissioner Karski?
I guess we have, the way I'm looking at this, we have two separate things going on here. And, you know, when we look at the involuntary commitment and somebody doing what they feel is in the best interest of their child, I mean, my God, we hear about, you know, school shootings and this type of thing going on and where people probably didn't do everything they could have. I'd hate to discourage people from doing what they think needs to be done to prevent somebody from harming themselves or from harming others because they're worried they're going to get a bill from the county. So for that part, I would be okay with taking that lien off. The other part, I mean, it's, this is where you're accused of something and you plead guilty to it and you don't, it's kind of a he said, she said type of situation. So I'm not absolutely certain I would be in favor of removing that part of the lien. These are two totally separate and distinct actions and I think they need to be considered separately.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, and I know that we've had discussions before about the issue of when fees are incurred for involuntary commitments of dependents. Honestly, people who care for others incur lots of expenses for dependents and this is not a situation where there's a property sale, there's no pending immediate action that is occurring that requires a removal of these debts to the county at this point. And so I would not be in favor of abating this or compromising this lien at this time.
Commissioner Bird?
Question for Commissioner Bender. So either part of it or just?
I don't see any reason to abate either part of it at this time.
If I may.
Commissioner Bird?
I take your point and, but I also agree with Commissioner Karski about the idea that IVC for a family member is, for some reason, goes on your bill. And who knows that family member better than, you know, a relative? And yet, at the same time, if Commissioner Karski would ask me to be committed, he would get no bill at all. If my wife did, she would get the bill. And who would know better than my wife? And again, with school shootings and all that kind of stuff, it seems to me we ought to question whether we should lean any of those charges if, in fact, we are dealing with, you know, public safety and individual health situations. So my thought is, though, I'm in agreement with you, Commissioner Bender, about the other half of it because we're not going to seize her trailer and evict her onto the street. And there is no, you know, pounding on the door, trying to get a hundred bucks or something from them. At the same time, I do feel more congenial towards anyone that does make a $25 a month payment for six months or something. It would be a lot easier to forgive it if there was some good faith attempt to pay it off. So, go ahead.
Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious if I could ask a question for the state's attorney's office or maybe somebody else knows the answer to this. Does anybody that makes an application for an IVC get leamed? Or does it have to be a blood relative? Or what is the dividing line there?
Madam Chair, well, I think that the court-appointed attorney statute provides that the individual for whom the attorney was sought can be leamed as well as their minor child's parents. And so just in virtue of the court-appointed attorney fee lien section under our titles, I think that the only individuals that can be leamed are the parents or the individuals themselves.
So in this case, the person here apparently was leamed for somebody who she's not a parent of or a guardian of. So that is a little confusing.
It shouldn't have been. Melinda, do you have a comment on that?
I understood the codified law to read that the parents and family members were responsible for liens when they initiated a petition. I don't have that law to reference with me.
Madam Chair, if, I'm going to make a motion and separate the two DPNOs here. So on DPNO 76366 in the amount of $1,350.10, I'm going to make a motion to leave that one on the applicant.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to just dismiss the 94918.
Well, right now, I'm splitting them. So I'm just doing the one, the first one to leave it on them.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to compromise DPN, no, not, to not compromise DPNO number 76366, the amount of $1,350.10, and leave that on the applicant. Correct, Commissioner Bird? All those, Commissioner Bender?
Oh, no. Did we have a second? I'm sorry, I lost track. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And now the second part, Commissioner?
Well, on this one, I guess I'm in agreement with Mr. Karski. And I think we should take this off and relieve the applicant of this family burden.
So your motion is to?
That's my motion, is to dismiss the charge on DPNO 94918.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. I have a question for Melinda. Melinda, weren't there two IvCs?
Yes, there are. DPNO 76366 represents $504.80 in public advocate representation and $845.30 for IVC court-appointed attorney.
Were you aware of that, Commissioner?
I'm, my motion, I guess, passed and I'm happy with it.
Okay. So I now have a, I have a motion to dismiss DPNO number 94918 in the amount of $244.40. Commissioner Bender?
I just have a comment. I'm not going to support this one. It's not consistent with what we just did and it's also not consistent with what we've done in the past. I would, however, like to make sure that we clarify what the statute is and that if these liens were applied improperly, that that is addressed.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
And if the chair so desired, you could move this down the calendar a bit and let me find the statute if that was okay with the presenter and with the commission so that I can quote that statute for the commissioner.
Can I make a substitute motion to defer this to?
Commissioner, it'll have to be at least two weeks.
I don't have a calendar in front of me. What would be two weeks from today?
Twenty-seventh is next week. So that'd be the?
April.
Third.
April 3rd?
I have a substitute motion to defer to April 3rd.
I have a second.
I have a second. So all those in favor of the substitute motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then on the original motion, all those in favor, correct?
No.
Correct. On the original motion to compromise the lien, all those, do we have to vote on that one? Since we do a substitute motion?
You can, if there was a substitute motion, so I think that as long as that's done, as long as it was in the form of a substitute motion, I think you're good.
Okay. All right. Then we will move on. Next is the opportunity for public comment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, thank you, Melinda, anyone who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Since no one's coming up, I would like to make a small comment.
Okay.
Which is, it was my privilege to read the proclamation at St. Patrick's Day. And a good time was had by all. But I happened to run into our old friend Evan Nolte, who said that during his moments of leisure he now has, he watches our show. So I'd like to do a shout-out to Evan Nolte if you're watching today.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider carryover supplements for the 2017 budget to the 2018 budget. Kim Adamson, good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. We are holding a public hearing this morning to consider supplements from 2017 to the 2018 budget. I will look to direction from you as to how you want to proceed reviewing the supplement requests. In your briefing packet, you do have a schedule that details out the individual requests by department and by fund. We have total supplement requests in the general fund of $1,509,195.30. And then we have supplement requests in several special revenue funds totaling $1,425,340.44. We can address any of these individually. Department heads are available to address your questions.
Okay.
And once all the questions have been addressed, there is a resolution to pass the supplement requests.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bird?
Kim, thanks for coming up here on this. You know, something like the pedigree maintenance for $8,100, isn't the city responsible for pedigree maintenance? Do they?
The city is, yes. They pay us a monthly allocation based on the budgeted expenditures for the pedigree maintenance. And then at the end of the year, we basically true up to what our actual costs were. So in this case, our actual maintenance costs were less than budget and now we owe this $8,000 back to the city.
Wow. Maybe we could have done more maintenance over there.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the budget? Not seeing anyone moving.
I would have another question if I may.
Commissioner Bird?
So, bottom line, are we out of budget on this? I mean, are things, in as much as there are some charges over and above what we budgeted, is that beyond our capability? How are we doing?
In fact, these items were not over budget. These requests are only for items that were within the budget constraints for 2017. So we finished, I can't quote the exact amount, but we finished the year under budget by more than what these budget requests add up to.
And so these are carryover charges?
Correct.
Thanks.
Some of the bills that didn't get paid till 2018 that were actually incurred in 2017.
Yes.
Any other questions? I would look for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Do it for you, Kim?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Item number 11 is the Juvenile Detention Center 2017 Services Update Presentation. Hi, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss the 2017 year at JDC. I plan on going over some statistics with you as well as discussing some challenges and some opportunities that we see coming to us in 2018 and 2019. There's three main areas that I am showing stats regarding the Juvenile Detention Center. They're kind of the key ones that will show you what we're utilizing for beds, how many intake calls we're getting, and the number of admissions. The first slide shows you the total number of intake calls that we received in 2017. There were a total of 979. 761 of those were from Minnehaha County alone. So a great majority of them come from our area. The types of calls in that 761 for Minnehaha County are broken down for you. 529 of those are for criminal acts. The second highest one is for abuse and neglect. What's unique about this is Minnehaha County is about the only county where we receive intake calls for abuse and neglect. Most other counties, they're calling directly to a judge. This has been going on for 20 years and it's never been changed. We've talked about addressing the judges regarding that to try and reduce the number of calls that we have to handle. And we look forward to having that discussion with the new presiding judge when they're appointed. Yes.
So why was that, why is the process different in Minnehaha County than other counties? Do you know?
It, I think it's just historical. It's always been done that way and that's why we're looking forward to that conversation with the presiding judge to discuss that and hopefully remove that obligation for our intake staff. You'll see coming up that each one of these intake calls average about 36 minutes. And when you get into the A&amp;N portion of those calls as well, they usually take a little bit longer. Usually there's multiple children involved, which cause it to take a little bit longer as well. So they are tying up our intake staff time. Like I said, we're hoping to entertain that conversation with the new presiding judge when they come on and try to get that changed.
Commissioner Karski?
I thought, good. I'd like to get a little deeper into the weeds on abuse and neglect, too. I mean, I think I have an understanding, but I'm not certain I do and I'm not too sure most people know what is happening with these cases. So boil it down, I mean, what's happening here?
Okay. So I guess I should back up and explain what an intake call is. When law enforcement come into contact with youth that are going to be probably taken into custody, they're going to be calling our staff to complete what's called, we call an intake. But what comes out of that is called a temporary custody directive. Within 24 hours to 48 hours, depending on the type of call, they'll be going before a judge. And this guides that process and gives the judge information to determine what needs to happen as far as continuing custody or release options that happen. So when the officer calls us, they're providing an affidavit or a sworn testimony into the facts of the case, whether it's criminal or A&amp;N. We take that information and then we have guidelines that we need to follow to determine what's the least restrictive alternative for these youth, whether it's criminal, A&amp;N, et cetera. Usually on an A&amp;N case, we're going to be placing the child into DSS custody. DSS will be notified of the situation and they'll begin their investigation.
So are these, when we talk abuse and neglect, are these victims of abuse and neglect?
Correct. The children are the victims in this case, so it's initiating a case against the adult parents.
So we're, to me, it just seems something wrong with the process that we're, when we use the term putting them in custody, that it's almost like we're incarcerating somebody for being a victim.
And that might be my terminology that's correct. We're placing them into protective custody in that situation. Whether it's foster home, shelter care can be utilized for these individuals. Sometimes it's an alternative relative placement. We place them into the custody of Child Protection Services and then they find the proper protective placement for them.
And our process varies from other counties in that you're involved where, as in other counties, it goes straight to a judge and the judge makes that placement?
Yes. If you look at historically how the intake process has happened, previously to probably 2010, 2011, most other counties, all intake calls were done to judges. Minnehaha County has been doing this since around '96, '97 to where the Juvenile Detention Center staff, a certain number of them are sworn in as lay magistrate judges to handle these intake calls. As part of the JDAI process, the intakes were, kind of made part of that process and they wanted to have experienced, well-trained intake officers to make consistent decisions so that you're not getting justice by geography. They wanted to be consistent not only in Sioux Falls, but Charles Mix County, Brookings County. So as part of that process, then the presiding judges in the different circuits would determine who would do the intakes for those counties in their circuit. We've been assigned as intake officers in almost all of the First Circuit, Second Circuit, which is Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and part of the Third Circuit, which is Brookings, Moody, Lake.
So on that previous slide, all intakes for abuse and neglect, that one right there, are for all those counties? Or not?
In the types of calls for Minnehaha County? Is that the slide you're talking?
No, the A&amp;N, is that for all those counties?
There's no, that's just the total number of intake calls. We've pleaded period for all counties, that initial slide of the intake calls?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But are the abuse and neglect for all those counties or are they strictly for Minnehaha County?
On your second slide?
We occasionally get an abuse and neglect call from other counties, but it's rare. I'd say not even a handful in a year for other counties. The slide that breaks down the type of calls we're getting, that's specifically to Minnehaha County.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And just a clarification for our audience. DSS is Department of Social Services and A and S is Abuse and Neglect.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I get used to using that.
I know, we all do. So we can probably- I know, we all do, so we can probably move on.
Any, no other questions regarding the intake call? We completed two hundred and forty-eight fewer calls in two thousand sixteen, or compared to two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. I should have phrased the Minnehaha County Law Enforcement. That includes all law enforcement in Minnehaha County. That's not just Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. By far, Sioux Falls Police Department is the highest caller. But as you can see, roughly eighty percent of all intake calls we receive come from communities in Minnehaha County. And as I stated, each call takes about thirty-six minutes. The admission statistics for the year, we admitted four, had four hundred and thirty-eight total youth admitted into the Juvenile Detention Center. This slide is a little bit sloppy, but as you can see, two hundred and twelve of them were from Minnehaha County with the next largest user being the Department of Corrections in Lincoln County. Again, you can see that we're continuing to decrease the amount of admissions that are into the detention center. I believe that's going to be plateauing pretty close, between four hundred and five hundred is where I expect that to be year to year. Two thousand, yes.
No, that's okay. Jamie, I'm just curious what the basis is for your opinion that it's going to plateau at this point since it's kind of been steadily declining?
When you look at two thousand fourteen, where we were at eight hundred and eighty-three, there's been changes in law since then. We used to receive far greater numbers of Department of Corrections youth into our facility with changes in criteria for commitment to the Department of Corrections and changes in how they can revoke kids to send them back to placement. We're seeing fewer of those admissions from the Department of Corrections. With the utilization of J D A I, there's more communities coming on base with that. Right now, Mitchell and Brookings and I believe, Yankton? For sure, Mitchell and Brookings are coming on base with that and
Aberdeen.
Oh yeah, Aberdeen, I'm sorry. They're out of this, this information, but they're taking on the philosophy of J D A I. They're trying to come up with alternatives to using secure detention. They're coming up with community resources that they can use, so I, I think with the number that we're seeing from Minnehaha County and the Department of Corrections, that it should be coming to where it's kind of steady. I'm hoping that we're not going to see another increase, you know, but I think we're right around where it should be at.
So we've had all the good news, now we get the bad news. This is, the next part's what I'm particularly interested in.
Yes, now the bad news. We're seeing an increase in bed days. This last year, we had nine thousand four hundred and thirty-four total. As you can see, Minnehaha County accounted for five thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight of those bed days. And then again, D L C is the second highest user and Lincoln's third. We're jumping up compared to two thousand fifteen. One of the big changes that contribute to this is the direct filing of youth that are committing severe crime. Two thousand seventeen, I think, is a year that is not going to continue, I hope. It was one of those unique years where we had a lot of kids charged for very serious crimes. At one point, we had fifty percent of our population direct filed into adult court. We had days where we were at eighteen youth total and nine of them were direct filed into adult court for charges such as murder, manslaughter, rape first, and a great number of them are for burglary first.
Commissioner Bender?
So, is there, was there a change in law? First of all, did the direct filing law change, or was there some change in law, or is it just a change in the, the types of crimes that were being committed?
Two thousand seventeen was unique in the, the number of those crimes that we have seen. The law states that you shall direct file them. Previously, there was some interpretation of whether or not we should direct file them or we know it's not going to stick in adult court, so let's keep them in juvenile court and go that way. And now they stick strictly to the shall direct file. So, you know, that made a big difference, but the, the types of crimes we've seen in two thousand seventeen were not a normal year. We had, we had a youth in there for attempted murder for the Harrisburg shooting. I know that's not Minnehaha County, but we had youth in there for beating a kid to death. We had a youth in there for crashing a car into a tree. We've had youth in there for, like I said, we currently have one in there right now for holding a knife to a young lady's throat and raping her. So, the type of youth that we're holding in the detention center are the type of youth that we are scared of, not that we're upset at. We're, we're holding the right kid at the right place at the right time.
Commissioner Kersky.
And I, that's what I want to hear and, you know, appreciate hearing. Just curious, you know, you talk about, you know, the really bad stuff, but when it, when it comes to drugs, are we, is there a difference in how we hold them for possession versus distribution?
We do not hold them strictly for possession for the most part. Sometimes we'll, most of the time, it's ingestion of a controlled substance if we're holding them in those situations. We're seeing more meth again. I'm praying to God and thankful that we haven't seen heroin in youth yet. I'm sure it's happening, but we haven't seen that at the detention center. Most of these violent crimes that I talk about are because of drugs. They're drug deals that go bad. They're, the, the accident by the Midco Aquatic Center was over, I want to say twenty-five dollars worth of marijuana. You know, we've had just unfortunate amounts of small amount of drugs where people end up dead. And unfortunately, it's youth that are committing these crimes. You know, I can go into a lot of my philosophies on it, but that's, that's all it would be. There's so many contributing factors. It's not just drugs. It's people's morals. People scoff at violent video games, but I believe it desensitizes our youth to where they play a game to where they get bonus points for knocking off the hooker they just raped, you know, stealing cars. And unfortunately, all these things contribute to youth and what they do.
Thanks, Jamie. Want to move on to the next slide?
Okay. Again, average daily population by year, you can see over the ten-year period, we've, we've greatly decreased the number of kids that we have in youth on any given day. I, I think if you look at two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, they're, they're kind of unique years that I think, you know, because of different circumstances, they don't accurately reflect what we should be seeing. I think if you look at the biggest pattern there, we should be averaging around twenty to twenty-one kids a day. Minnehaha County broken down for you. The fifteen a day, to me, seems about right. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen were, I believe, due to judicial philosophy at that point. We had a judge change at that time and then now we're seeing, since J D A I's come on board and people follow specifically to J D A I, I think we're seeing that it should be about fifteen a day for Minnehaha County. I've kind of covered some of this on, in, in talking about the numbers. The intake call numbers are going down. The reasons for that, again, more counties are adopting the J D A philosophy. Law enforcement have a greater understanding of when to call. We used to get called all the time on no matter what the charge was. Runaway, possession of marijuana, petty theft. Some of those have been changed into citable offenses, like the petty theft. You know, we have the availability of a reception center to where if they feel it's a small enough crime that they aren't seeking the kid to be lodged and they just need to reunify with a parent and the parent's not currently available, they can take them straight to the reception center without an intake call. That reduces some of our numbers and like I, I anticipate kind of a plateau of the number of calls that we are getting. And I talked about the increase of violent crime. The direct fileable offenses. Talked about the fifty percent of youth on a certain day. And those youth that are tried as adults average at least two hundred and fifty days in detention. Some of them, right now, we have one that's going to be fifteen months before sentencing. So, some of them are shorter, some of them are longer, some of them age out. So if they turn eighteen, while they're waiting for everything to happen, we transfer them to the jail. So there's a lot of things that come into play with those kids committing violent crime. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the alternatives. We contract with Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care services, reception center services, and Evening Report Center. The first one, the Shelter Care, they served three hundred and fifty youth last year. Two hundred and fifty-five of those are unique youth, which means that they were only there one time. The average length of stay is just over ten days and the average daily population is almost ten youth. For Minnehaha alone, we served two hundred and ten youth. Their average length was just over eight days and we averaged just under five youth in there. D S S and D O C use, forty-three youth served for approximately twenty days and just over two youth a day.
Jamie?
Yes.
Would you mind just, particularly for people who might be watching this, explaining just the philosophy of shelter care, who goes to shelter care?
Sure. Shelter care is utilized for some of those lower level crimes or where home may not be appropriate at the time that the committed, the youth is committing those crimes. A judge, it could also be used when judges going through the court process and determining that home's just not the right place right now, but they're not committing something severe enough that we'd want to mix them in with these kids that are committing the severe crime, so we'll put them into shelter care. Department of Social Services utilizes it for some of those abuse and neglect cases where they don't have other options to, such as foster care or relative placement as well. So it's, it's our lower level offenders that, for some reason, home's just not really appropriate at the time.
Is it a secure facility?
It is a non-secure facility. The Reception Center, again, it's located at the same place as the Shelter Care. Reception Center is designed to make parental reunification possible in cases that are very low level, but the parents just not available. A lot of the use for Shelter Care comes from our schools. When there's incidents within the school to where, you know, maybe a fight or a disruption doesn't rise to the level of either Shelter Care or Secure Detention, but parents can't come immediately. They might not be able to get their, get off of work to get there. We can take these youth to the Reception Center and then the parents can come pick them up later. They'll complete some assessments with the kids and discuss situations with the families, provide options for ongoing care in the community to try and reduce some of these lower level offenses from reoccurring. Last year, they, they took in seven hundred and five, or they had seven hundred and five individuals brought there. It was for, but it was four hundred and ninety-eight youth that they served. Usually stay there for less than six hours and they usually serve about two kids a day. The Evening Report Center, I, I see this as a positive as well. It's a very good program for kids that were seeing family issues or school struggles. The improper use of time in the evening. We have this available while court's going on to where we can assign youth to this alternative. They can go anywhere from one day a week up to six days a week. They can serve seven kids a day in this program. It's an after-school program where they are picked up from their school and taken to L S S. They're provided homework help. They do daily life skills training. They try to do some cognitive corrective thinking type programs to help them make better decisions. They teach them how to cook somewhat. They teach them how to budget. They help them find jobs. We see a lot of success out of the youth that enter into this program. And quite often, when a kid comes in for disposition and they're in the Evening Report Center program, they'll ask the judge if they can continue in that program because they're seeing successes that they haven't seen, whether it be in school or finding a job. It's a place where they're safe and they're comfortable. And then at the end of the night, they're returned home, directly home, and L S S provides all that transportation.
Jamie?
Yes.
So does it, does, to get, to, does a child have to be referred to the reporting center by a judge? Is that how you get into that program?
Yes, currently. We do have some good news to go along with that. L S S applied for a grant through the United Way to be able to continue those services with kids after disposition in court and they were awarded that grant. So we're going to be starting expansion of that program for those kids that want to continue on and find those successes.
One of the problems that we had, I just want to comment on that too, one of the problems we had was that once their court proceedings were done, they got kicked out of the program because there was no way to fund it and because that's not what the county was paying for. And so we were sticking some of these kids who were being successful back in their home situations and they were just falling apart. And some of the kids begged to stay in it and we had no, no avenues. So it's super exciting to me to hear that we finally have a grant position that we can keep these kids there that really want to succeed. Another comment that Jamie had made to me the other day that I was going to add was that kids in, in J D C are actually having a more stable situation where they're eating and sleeping and in a clean environment and they're actually earning credits in school. And he actually had a student that has now graduated from high school. So it's not all bad. Some of these kids are actually in a better situation than they were before. They may be criminals and they're going to be prosecuted for what they did, but they're getting an education and their environment is so much better than what they came from. Sorry, Commissioner Kersky.
Can I, can I take on to that real, real quick before you ask your question? The whole goal of the juvenile justice system is to provide these kids with opportunities to advance themselves and dig themselves out of the hole that they've created. We're always looking for options to help them out and we want to see success out of these youth. You know, the ideal way to do that is in the community. A lot of people picture every youth that go into juvenile court as a kid that's coming from a two-parent household with a white picket fence and they're going to go off to college. Great majority of our youth come from great poverty. They might not have a parent or only one or both, but they're struggling. Their parents struggle to find work. Sometimes they rely on these kids to raise the other kids. So, you know, they come from bad situations, trauma, and we're doing everything we can to address those situations and try and help them out. And this Evening Report Center is one of our, our greatest opportunities to do that with the kids in the community.
Commissioner Kersky.
Just kind of want to comment to what you said and then a question. You talk about it. In sales, we always say it works so well, I quit doing it. It's unfortunate, you know, if it's working, we need to keep doing it. You're getting a grant now, but the funding for L S S, does that come from our budget in some way, shape, or form? What, I mean, what does the county do for that?
We pay the full cost of Shelter Care. We pay the full cost of Reception Center and we pay for the Evening Report Center. We do sell some of those services to recoup some of those costs. The beds that are sold in Shelter Care, that comes off of our monthly bill. Evening Report Center, we have just started offering that to Lincoln Evening Report Center, we have just started offering that to Lincoln County youth that go to school at like Roosevelt or Lincoln, some of the Southern Edge schools, and we charge them a rate for that as well. Usually it's in conjunction with community supervision. But that, that rate is added on top of the community supervision fee.
Okay, you wanna move on?
Sure. And speaking of community supervision, we have two officers that work at that program out of the Juvenile Detention Center. These are youth that are going through the court process. They might not need constant supervision in regards to twenty-four, seven care, but they need just a little bit more support in the community while the court process is going on. We wanna make sure that they show up for court. So we have two officers that we assign these cases to. We utilize an electronic monitor. Sometimes we utilize what's called a SCRAM bracelet, which is another bracelet that they wear that monitors to make sure that they're not consuming alcohol. We have the Evening Report Center available to these youth. And we're out in the evenings and weekends when the most tempting times occur and checking on these youth in their home, working with the parents and the youth to try and come up with solutions to, to start addressing problems prior to disposition of the, of their cases. Some of the challenges that we're facing is we are seeing a higher level of violence in the youth that we are housing. I was just discussing this morning with Commissioner Heiburger, some of the things that we see and, and how they ebb and flow so much. Kids that are acting violently within the detention center. Last quarter of 2017, we had three situations where we had to go hands-on with youth and prevent them from causing more damage to other youth or themselves. Two of those were attempted suicides. So, two of the three where we were preventing the youth from hurting themselves any further or keeping them from hurting themselves and one was where a youth was violent towards another. Now, we come into the first quarter of 2018 and it's a totally different picture. We've had four staff that have been assaulted and one youth on youth assault that have happened in this first quarter. So it's so up and down. Some of the things that contribute to that are the, the kids' situations and, and just their regular way of dealing with bad situations is to act out violently because that keeps people away from them. I myself was assaulted Friday. I was bit. And, and that situation, a girl was trying to wrap a telephone cord around her neck to try and strangle herself and, and she's unfortunately a very damaged youth. And we're trying to help her as much as we can. She came into us because she was trying to sell Xanax and, and passed out behind the wheel of a car and, and put it into a snowbank in a Walmart parking lot. She has, comes from a great family that are supportive, but she's had trauma in her life. And, and unfortunately, you know, we see that, that these kids don't know how to deal with their situations. They turn to drugs to mask their pain. And, and we start having situations to where they become violent because that's their defense mechanism. Some just don't care. They think they have nothing to lose and, and they punch one of my staff and give him ten stitches in his face, so.
And that probably moves on to mental health concerns in housing.
True, mental health. You know, so we see more and more drugs coming in with kids. We just checked out a kid last week to move back home and we had fourteen different medications that we had to check out for that youth. So, you know, we don't have many options for providing mental health services within the detention center. We do contract for our QMHP. They will provide weekly counseling with kids that we identify. But it's, it's more geared towards a short-term solution than a long-term solution. We do have to transport kids occasionally to med checks and some psychiatric type appointments. That's increasing as well. We used to never transport for those types of situations. So, we do see more mental health holds than we've ever seen. They seem to continue to go up by one or two a year. We can house the mental health, twenty-four hour mental health hold that law enforcement can place on a youth. The, the Mental Health Board will get involved, do an assessment and determine whether to keep that hold and move them on to either a Vera or HSC or release that. And I can tell you, I think there were twelve last year and only one of those were released. The, the next one is acquiring a new Assistant Director. I've been informed that Lynn Crell, our longtime Assistant Director, is going to retire this year. We're anticipating, she hasn't given us an exact date, but we're anticipating early June. I've started the process with Carrie Dever of finding the type of person that we've identified we'd like to get. We're finalizing the job description and we'll be coming to you shortly to hopefully do the recruitment process prior to June. Staff training, we have had some turnover this year. We have four new staff that are gonna be starting by May seventh. So getting those new employees trained as well as ongoing training for our existing staff, that takes up a lot of time. We have different types of like our restraint that we do is through, we follow the SCM model. We have to do at least sixteen hours a year with all our staff on that. We have pre-re requirements that we have to do training for. So there's a lot of training that we have, are required to do year to year that take up time and how to best do that. Plus, we need to update some of our stuff. We're still using VHS tapes for some of our initial training. The information is good, it's just outdated look and then people feel it, it's kinda silly because of the way people talk or look. So we're in the process of, of updating all of that. And then finally, avoiding the program slip with JDAI. Occasionally, after we get into the process for several years, they have found that people will slip back to some old habits. Part of that is due to turnover and people not understanding fully. So we've been going through the process of training people better throughout the year to stay up to date and focused on what our purpose is. And we wanna make sure that we're not falling back into lodging too many kids for, or utilizing an override to house kids in detention. Opportunities and projects that we currently have going on. I'm working on an exit survey of youth and parents to try and get an idea of how they feel we're doing with their youth, how the youth feel about it. The main things I'm looking for is, do they feel safe? Do they feel cared for? How are our staff doing? What areas can we improve from their point of view? Interestingly enough, I went searching for an example to kinda, why reinvent the wheel type thing? And there were none out there. So I went to the JDAI Connect and the forum of all the JDAI users and asked for examples and found that no one in the nation is really doing this. So we're kinda taking the lead on this and, and there was probably twenty, twenty-five different people that are saying, please share with what you design and, and we're looking to, as us, as kinda the leader in this situation and trying to come up with that. I hope to have that model ready by the end of April. So, the, we have been working with USD, the, the people that did the space study. They offered opportunities for department heads to bring problems to them and they let them utilize students to come up with solutions. We, we presented a project of evaluating how we schedule our staff and suggestions regarding making sure we have proper coverage and if, help us determine if we have the appropriate number of staff. I expect that to be finishing up hopefully by the end of March. We have one more meeting left where they're gonna present us the final product that they have designed. It was, it was a cool experience. They had six teams of students come up, attack it in different ways. They took the best stuff from all six of those groups and they're putting it together into one, one package that we can easily plug things into and, and schedule our staff in a more efficient way maybe. I'm gonna be developing a Narcan protocol. I've already started by working with Ward and Gromer on what they currently have. Like I said, to this point, we've been lucky that we haven't seen the opiates coming into JDC. But I wanna be prepared in case it ever does happen so that we don't have an unnecessary death in the facility if, if someone were to OD on opiates. I talked about the staff training already. We're currently cooperating with the South Dakota Unified Judicial Systems IT on, on risk assessment instrument software. That's designed more for all the other counties outside of Minnehaha and Pennington County. But we're gonna be contributing information to them so that there's real-time stats on the intakes that are done statewide. And then come this June, Shelter Care's contract is up for renewal. We have a lot of good things coming forward in that and I anticipate in April, I will be seeking some contract negotiation talks with you as a commission.
Any other questions for Jamie? We do have Sheila Walsh here for, oh, excuse me, Commissioner.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. You know, when you talked about a youth with fourteen meds, were they prescribed meds from their doctor?
Correct. A couple of those, I have to tell you though, are inhalers. So it was twelve different types of pills though that
Sure.
that we were checking out.
Well, I remember my mom getting that many and honestly, she did better when she did fewer.
I think in that situation, I, I think they were trying to transition from one to another. But that's just, when you think about time for my staff, they're, they're distributing those pills out to them two to three times a day. We have to count them when they come in. We have to count them every day if they're scheduled twos. So it's just a, a time-consuming project to make sure that we're giving them the pills when they're supposed to get them. We're giving them the proper dosages and, and making sure that they're safely taking them.
Well, if I may, but when my mom was in the nursing home, I know that they came in blister packs for each day. So they had, you know, the AM ones, the noon ones. Anyway, going back to, how are we doing? Is it related to our population growth? Is that changing things? I know the city has been talking about population growth as being one of the reasons for growth in calls.
I'm sure that contributes somewhat to it, but it's not the, to me, the biggest factor that we're struggling with is controlling drugs and drugs with youth. The drugs that these youth, like I said, it's a small amount of drugs that they'll become violent over. Twenty-five dollars worth of marijuana ends up in a, a death of a young individual, unfortunately.
And if, one more question. So are, are you finding more issues with recent arrivals to our community as opposed to long-term residents of established families or?
No, we aren't. You know, we do have an unfortunately high number of minorities represented in our populations, but these are youth that have been in the community. We occasionally get some transplant problems from other states, but it, there is not a significant immigrant population that is causing us problems.
Well, finally, if I may, I've gotta say that while many in our county organization deserve credit for the, the efforts we've done with JDAI, you and Cindy Heiburger and now retired Ken McFarland really deserve so much credit for the progress we've made as a community. So, thank you.
You're, you're correct in that. There are so many more players within our own community. Detention is just one piece of that. We've made strong strides with the, the juvenile justice system in our community as a whole, not just detention.
Commissioner Karski.
Just to comment, if I may, you know, with what's going on in our society and the country and you hear the reports about how this young man in Florida basically slipped through the cracks. You are the, you are the safety net with these young people who you, I think, quite adequately or accurately described as being violent because they feel they have no recourse. I mean, that's just what they feel they have to do to protect themselves. And you're the one, and your group are the one that we're relying on within our community to prevent that from happening. So thank you for everything you do. And I know you probably don't get to hear that often enough, but you know, I just wanna extend that, that thanks and encourage you to keep up the good work and yeah, we, we count on you.
We never settle for what we're doing. We're always looking for ways to improve what we're doing. You know, I appreciate your thanks, but I'm only one small piece. And I have many, I have several, all our staff that do a great job. The, I, I told you about the young lady on Friday. One of her things, as we were dealing with her, is she's like, why do you care? You know, she kept saying, I wanna die and, and why do you care? And my supervisor said it so well is that we have twenty-five, twenty-six full-time staff that care about kids or they wouldn't be here. We wanna make sure that you succeed in life. And she started crying saying that my parents don't even care. Why do you care? And those are the type of people that we employ and they do a great job and I'm very proud of them.
Thanks, Jamie. We do have Sheila Walsh from LSS here. Sheila, did you have any comments? I didn't wanna put you on the spot, so if you don't.
Okay, thank you. I make one more comment too, that Carol did send me an article yesterday, Will I Leave Its Capital Press? Is that correct? And there was an article in there about the state's juvenile justice reform written, I believe, by our governor, I believe. I believe that's what I read. I could be wrong on that. But it was a very good article, if you wanna pull that up and look at it, just talking about the state's juvenile justice reforms and what they have done. And what we've done locally is a little bit different, but now those are melding together in different ways. And so a lot of, a lot of good reports in his article too, so. With that, we will move on to item number twelve, which is a brief presentation on the Garrettson Community Ambulance, Mr. Penning. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Penning with the Garrettson Community Ambulance Service. I've been with the ambulance service for about seven years, started as a volunteer and then moved up from there. I do speak fast, so if you need to slow me down, it was a brief presentation. So I just kinda wanted to go over especially last year's call volumes 'cause I actually found some significant changes that we haven't seen in the past as trends. Last year, we ran a hundred and sixty-four calls. In 2016, we ran a hundred and seventy-one and in 2015, we ran two hundred and twenty-three. So with that, you can see a, a huge decline over the last two years. A lot of that contributes to the nursing home, depending on what residents are there, administration and such as that. It can really affect our call volume as well as the community will have some changes in our call volume. The significant change though that we saw last year is that we've always said that we had eighty percent of our call volume being transports. Last year, if you do the breakdown, we had sixty-eight transfers out of the nursing home. Fifty-six of those calls were inside the city limits of Garrettson and forty of those calls were outside of the city limits of Garrettson within our territory yet. We have seen an increase in what our outlying of the community calls are. So that forty, although it seems small, that's actually a, a pretty big number for us to see that increase. And then obviously the steady increase of the, or the steady decrease of the nursing home transports. With that, we really don't know what the future call volume's gonna be. We don't really see trends. Honestly, I, I feel like we're gonna be in that one-eighty range and that's pretty much where I feel like we're gonna be steady across the years, unless we see any drastic changes with that. A little bit about our service in the last year, we have twenty-five members on our service. Six of those are advanced life support providers. The rest remaining are basic life support providers. And with those six advanced life support providers, we have one nurse, one advanced EMT and the rest are medics. Most of our medics practice outside of our agency as well. So we have their continuing training. Their service on the streets isn't just based off that one-sixty-four call volume, which is really important to us. That way they're getting the experience and then when they come back to serve the Garrettson Community Ambulance, our residents get equivalent to a larger city or larger community medic with that experience. For 2018, we're looking at two big projects to kinda change the course of how we're doing things. A couple of years ago, we did an EMT class within the city limits of Garrettson. We found that with that, we got about five EMTs out of that class that stayed, out of the about eight that took the class. The benefit that we saw with that is that if it's inside of the community, when they come home after work, they can take the two, three hours a night to take the class compared to if they had to go from work to Sioux Falls to take that course. So we're hoping that we get another five to six EMTs out of that, so we're gonna try it again. try it again. And we're trying to space out the classes, too, so that way we're not going back-to-back and only getting small attendance with them, so. Also, in 2018, we're going to look at an additional fundraiser. This fundraiser is yet to be decided. We have several ideas on the table, so, I mean, you guys will definitely get invited to whatever we're going to do. This is just kind of to balance out the fact that we lost call volume. It's hard for us to ask our volunteers to put in extra time, extra effort to raise money when they've already put in about twenty-four hours a week of volunteer time. So with that, we're just trying to balance out our budget. We're not going to see a huge increase where we can stop asking for money from anyone, but at least we're not going to go under with that. And then this month of, or next month on April, I think it's twentieth or twenty-second, which would be the last Sunday, I can't remember, is going to be our annual breakfast at the Legion, and that's going to start at about eight AM. And with that, I'll be gladly to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Again, Commissioner Barth?
Of course, I have questions. How's it been working for mutual aid? Have you been called? Have you had to call for mutual aid with your neighboring ambulance services?
Absolutely. We actually call for mutual aid quite often. We don't risk anything. So if our ambulance or our truck is in Sioux Falls on a call or dealing with another call, it's actually happened about six times last year in which that we were on a call in the city yet, and then our call went out. And it's even gotten to the point where there is two nursing home calls at the same time. So we work a lot with our outlying services, being MedStar in Del Rapids, to mutual aid. In the last year, I can only recall once that we got called as mutual aid to respond to another jurisdictional area. But it's really important to us that everyone works as a team, and that's definitely increased over the last two years, that you've seen everyone, you know, work better together and that we're really looking out for our communities, so.
That's great. And if, you know, we have that scholarship program for EMTs. Has that benefited the classes that you've held?
Yep, we've used that every year since you guys implemented it. And it's a great program for us to really help fund and get these students in there and take less on their shoulders. Our agency will pick up more weight on ourselves than take it out on a student or a member. So if someone really has interest in serving their community, we'll help fund it, and then we'll ask the county through that scholarship program to help fund it as well. So the more we could take off the future volunteer, the better for, that we've seen. We still want them to have a little bit of commitment in the game, but...
Sure. Well, thank you.
There's your questions. Thank you for coming and sitting through our meeting and giving us a report. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen is consider a recommendation for a bid award of project number MC-16-04, County Highway 134 Reconstruction from MC-122 to just north of MC-110. Bids to be opened March seventh. Shannon, hi.
Hi, good morning. Shannon Schultz, Assistant County Highway Superintendent. Before you today is request to approve an award for a big, our big contract for the year, which is County Highway 137 Reconstruction Project. It's about six-point-two miles, and there were six bidders. The lowest bidder was RNG Construction Company at two million, eight-hundred-twenty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and seven cents. There were no anomalies in the bids. The engine's estimate was about three-point-zero-three million, so a small savings in our bid prices there. And our consultant, Stockwell Engineers, has reviewed the bid documents and recommended award to the RNG Construction Company out of Slayton, Minnesota, I think it is. And we concur, so therefore, we are requesting that you approve award.
Any questions for Shannon? Your motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion of a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Shannon, I have one question.
Sure.
So this is a reconstruction. Is it a widening of the road, or is it just a reconstruction of the, tear up the asphalt, put on new asphalt?
All.
All.
Vertical curves that are dangerous are being removed. We're widening out to a hundred feet right away where we don't have any. Some of those intersections are on a vertical curve, and so the east-west portions of those intersections are getting brought down as well. So it's, reconstruction is, as nice as we can make it and make a nice road that meets our design speed.
And I think I read November, they're hoping, or are we talking November as in reasphalted and everything, or just gravel road by November?
Just like 149, it'll be gravel through the winter. The term of the contract is to be complete with all grading. The east-west roads, where there's an intersection with an interchange at the interstate, those east-west roads will be paved to maintain that good access. But for the most part, the road north and south will be gravel through the winter and paved next year.
It's my neighborhood. Not really, but kind of. Nice to know. Thank you, Shannon. The next one, I guess you'll probably, this one, too. Number fourteen is authorize the highway department to purchase two tandem axle trucks from Minnesota State Contract number T-6475 and authorize the chairman to sign the purchase agreement.
Correct, thank you. Again, we are requesting permission to buy two of our big work trucks. They're the chief haulers of sand and also chief haulers of dirt in the summertime. This is off a Minnesota State bid. Excuse me. The total price per each is one-hundred-seventeen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars for a combined total of two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. I would note that these are freight liners. Last year, we did the same thing with some Mack trucks, and these are seven-thousand dollars less than the Mack trucks were. So that's kind of an interesting thing with just the Minnesota State bid and how that environment is changing, but if there's any questions about that, I'd be glad to entertain them. I know you have a large packet there, so I apologize if you push print and there was eighty pages that came out. That is required just to show everybody that all those things that we're required to do when we buy off a Minnesota State bid or any other bidder to include that information, so.
Are your mechanics comfortable in working on Mack trucks and freight liners, both?
Both.
Engines are different, so.
Can driving them?
Yeah.
What's the life expectancy on a truck like this for us?
That's a great question. Life expectancy, much like payment, where do you draw the line, right? I suppose you could keep a something for a long, long time, but at some point, it gets to be more cost-effective to sell it, right? When it's worth a little something. If you sell it exactly at the right time and do the cost value over time, there's a study in Iowa off of a university, and that study suggested because of the resale value, the ultimate time to replace a truck is in six years because the resale is so high. We don't really subscribe to that theory. I think our replacement plan is more like nine to twelve years, and still get a little bit out of it when we sell it.
You're talking, somebody has a ninety-seven Dodge with two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand miles on it, so, yeah.
So were these in our plan, the equipment acquisition plan for the budget this year?
Yes. Two trucks a year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen is authorize the highway department to purchase one broke RCT-350 Road Broom Sweeper from Minnesota State Contract number S-8465. Shannon?
Again, Mr. Barth, this is part of our annual materials purchase. It was approved last year. And off the Minnesota State bid, we'd like to drive, purchase this sweeper. It's a broche, B-R-O-C-E, and the contract release there is spelled out as S-8465. So the local vendors transsource, and they kind of have a territorial arrangement with the Minnesota bidder, which is Road Machinery Supplies. And again, the documentation about paperwork is attached. This would replace a Rosco unit that we actually declared a surplus last year, unit number two-eight-zero-three, and that was auctioned at the Goman Auction, and the cost of the new sweeper is sixty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Do you know what you got for that old sweeper?
Yes, we do. It was listed value of a thousand dollars. In the Goman Auction, it went for, on ten-twelve, it went for one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars.
Went for what?
One-thousand-eight-hundred.
Okay.
It was twenty years old. It was pretty well-used up, and it had some mechanical problems, so it didn't get a premium, for sure.
Right.
Madam Chair, so inasmuch as it's on the Minnesota contract, it's still coming from a Sioux Falls company, is that correct?
The payment will be to the Minnesota vendor who holds the contract.
Uh-huh.
The delivery will be from our local transsource, but the payment will be to the Minnesota contract holder.
And going back to the previous contract...
Similar.
Are, is that also going to be delivered from a local...
Yes.
...company? And our own statewide bids and county bids are lower or higher?
It's an interesting thing to compare how the state of South Dakota versus the state of Minnesota and other states bid something. The state of South Dakota basically wants a turnkey project with their stuff and their stuff only. So if we want exactly what South Dakota has, we could have purchased off their bid. However, we do not. We have different standards, we have different salt spitters, et cetera. And so the way Minnesota structures their bid is they have a laundry list of everything possible, and it's all publicly bid and advertised, and you can kind of just basically customize exactly what you want, and you know those prices, and that's how we work with Minnesota State bids.
Is stainless steel one of those options?
Stainless steel bodies, not, not part of this, that would be coming. So this is the truck and chassis, the stainless steel bodies and the sanders and the blades, that will be a forthcoming agenda item requests.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Shannon. Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for Human Services casework. Jamie?
Good morning. Jamie Phelps from Human Services. So I'm here to review the annual Lincoln County contract, and this contract is for Minnehaha County to provide casework services, both emergency services and medical services for Lincoln County. As you know, the position is split sixty-forty. Lincoln County pays sixty, and Minnehaha County's forty percent of that position. So there's a few items that are going to be amended that need to be reviewed here, and then we would ask for that you approve the contract as is with the, with the set amendments. Those amendments or changes would start off with the personnel. It's a modest change in the personnel costs, the salary and the benefits going forward for this year. Would change from fifty-nine-eighty-four to sixty-one-sixty monthly, and then the total contract up to seventy-three-nine-twenty, seventy-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty, fifty-four. And then the next couple amendments would be as a result of discussion and recommendations from our state's attorney's office. And the first one would be the wording in section four, one, the hold harmless section. The only change that was made there was to add the word defend in the first sentence of the paragraph one. And so Lincoln County would be defending against any potential claim or something in that, in the normal action taken by caseworkers handling these services for them, in these cases. The next one would be the wording in section six, insurance section. The change has Lincoln County providing adequate insurance coverage during the contract period before. The change, Minnehaha County was the sole provider of this. And so those would be the recommendations of the state's attorney's office. The Lincoln County State's Attorney's Office has agreed to these as, as stated, the amendments in the contract, and so it's up for you to consider and approve the contract as stated.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Bender?
Jamie, I'm curious how, if you guys track hours spent, I mean, if there's been, you know, it looks like the increase in personnel is just basically the change in salary on an annual basis.
Yeah.
But do you track, I mean, Lincoln County's growing pretty rapidly. Are you not having to expend additional hours addressing Lincoln County requirements?
No, we haven't been. It's been pretty minimal in terms of how much time we've had to increase to spend on that. And part of, and it, it fluctuates, you know, there's ebbs and flows with that. Sometimes it might be you have some days where you're, you get several medical cases or something where you're more busy with that, but then there's days where there's nothing, you know? And it can go for a period where there's not a whole lot there. So there's ebbs and flows with that. But I would say, in terms of overall, the time we spend with it is not a lot, and part of what they pay for is our expertise, our ability to be able to be there at a sec, at a moment's notice and be able to handle something with our knowledge and our expertise. We've got excellent knowledge and expertise, many years of handling these types of cases, particularly the ones that can get more complex, such as the medical cases and more involved. And so that's part of what they, they pay for. Prior to that, you know, the auditor's office was handling it down there, and sometimes they would be like, you know, what do we do with this? You know, because it can get pretty complex and blowing up pretty quickly and time-consuming. So, and I know that as time went on down there, they got more and busy, busier and busier as they grow with, with auditor-type details, so having to wear the different hats like that and handle welfare at the same time, the, the human services type stuff, get to be pretty difficult. And one of the biggest reasons, you know, that we came together as two different counties to provide these services and to help each other out is not only did we each have a need to, to have, because we use that, utilize that position for Minnehaha County work as well, we both had a need for extra work to be handled, but to best serve the public, that was the main reason, was to best serve the public, because as you can see with the quarterly reports I send you on human services, that it always ends up being that a majority, the vast majority of the, the cases that we see for Lincoln County are from southern Sioux Falls, and that is that five-seven-oh-one-oh-eight zip code area. And so what ends up happening is we can provide much better service for them right here at the Sioux Falls office, and whereas before, they would have to travel down to Lincoln County into Canton office, you know, at Canton, and not very feasible when you're dealing with emergency-type situations, that they would have to travel down to Canton. And not only that, particularly if, if they didn't have any transportation, motor transportation to get down to Canton. So it's enabled us to really better serve the Lincoln County residents, particularly those in southern Sioux Falls, as we have grown to the south into Lincoln County, and provide a great partnership to better serve the public, for sure, so.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just, I do think it's a great example of government collaboration, and it's a, it's a win-win for both counties, and I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Motion?
Second with a comment.
Commissioner Barth?
This agreement is one of our longest agreements with Lincoln County, if not the longest. I was not a commissioner when it, when it happened, and this commission went down and met with their commission in Lincoln County in Canton, and at the time, I was a candidate. I did attend that meeting. Hugh Grogan was our HS Director at the time, and, and this has really played very well, and it's, it's a great example, as Commissioner Bender pointed out, of intergovernmental cooperation, and it seems to be a win-win.
Yeah, and the number of applications you can see on the quarterly, quarterly reports that I issue to you, as well as the annual reports, that they've been pretty consistent with Lincoln County. So, you know, kind of to tail off on the, the prior question that I asked, that it's been pretty consistent, the numbers, they haven't really gone up a whole lot or down a whole lot, so. But again, part of that, what they're paying for is our expertise in our history with this, knowledge of handling all the different, complex, different types of medical cases and things like that, too.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County.
So moved. Oh, you have it already.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
Item number seventeen is declare two thousand and fourteen John Deere X-485 garden tractor surplus to receive a trade-in credit on the purchase of the new tractor. Mark, good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Mark Crins, facilities director. We currently have a two thousand and four X-485 John Deere garden tractor with attachments. We use this tractor for everything with the grounds, mowing, snow removal, landscaping, et cetera. Both the mower and the attachments are showing signs of significant wear nearing the end of their life expectancy. So we're in the process of purchasing a new X-754, which is comparable to size of the existing mower with Kibble equipment out of Garrettson. We received competitive quotes from a couple vendors here locally, and they were the, the low quote at seventeen-thousand, five-hundred dollars. So I'm requesting commission approval to authorize the forty, X-485 as surplus for trade-in on the new X-754 garden tractor with attachments. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Questions for Mark? Is there a motion?
There is.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number 18 is legislative update by Craig Dewey. Hi, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is the second week of the recess after the budget was passed by the legislature. There is one day remaining of the legislative session, which is the day to consider any vetoes that the governor has issued. As of about 6 o'clock last night or a little after, there were no reported vetoes on the Legislative Research Council's website. There are a number of bills outstanding that the governor still has the option of signing or vetoing. Three bills that are still on the tracking radar are House Bill 1126 in regards to certain medical tests that would be required to be performed for victims of rape or another sexual offense. Again, that is on the governor's desk right now. House Bill 1257 would designate certain highways by townships and counties as no maintenance highways. That is a bill that the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners has been working on and is pleased with where it's at. And then, Senate Bill 98 is in regards to the 911 surplus charge. I had reached out to Metro Communications, and Director Paul Niedringhaus indicated that right now, signs are favorable. The Department of Public Safety did testify in favor of that bill, which would have required some communication with the governor's office. So, again, that bill is still waiting for a signature veto by the governor. And then, lastly, MRC's law has caused some issue with increased costs, as well as a lot of effort by staff across the state in different counties with law enforcement and state's attorneys as well. And some revisions have been made to MRC's law in reaching out and communicating with the sheriff and the state's attorney, as well as Speaker of the House, Mark Mickelson, who is the prime sponsor of that legislation, will be providing much more detailed briefing on that in the next few weeks. That is being determined right now, given scheduling constraints. But just wanted to give you a heads up about those issues. If you do have questions about other bills at the legislature or process, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Craig?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Just two items. One is, I'd like to ask Ms. Gillespie to ask the state's attorney to give us a report on MRC's law. You know, we did hire extra people. What's going on with that? I happen to know someone that was a victim and got a very nice note about it as a victim. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we were, Senator Reynolds was here last week, and I've had some additional contact with him, and he pointed out that under a new law, they're able to pre-submit bills to be considered at the next legislative session. And he recommended that we work together with proponents, opponents, others, to come up with another alcohol bill that would maybe be more acceptable to everyone.
Commissioner Bender?
And just to follow up on Commissioner Barth's comment, and I know that the sheriff and the state's attorney and Representative Mickelson, they've all been reached out to so that they could come and do a joint presentation on MRC's law, so.
Great, thank you.
That'd be great.
And thanks to Craig for kind of coordinating, getting that off the ground, so.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Craig, for your travel up to Pear. I know you spent a lot of time up there away from your family, so thank you for doing that, too.
Happy to do it. Thanks.
Item number 19 is a commission liaison report. Are there any reports?
I just report briefly that Commissioner Karski and I attended the Public Defender Advisory Committee meeting this morning, and that we worked on some procedural guidelines for that office. Commissioner Karski was elected the chair of that advisory committee, and so it was a good, very productive meeting, I thought, and we will be bringing back the procedural guidelines when we kind of get them finalized to provide a little bit of structure to that entity, and the commission will get a chance to look at those when they're finalized.
Concur.
Commissioner, okay. Any other comments?
I'll just say that I did get some contact from the Treasurer's Office with concerns about the new software that we're bringing in. Pretty strongly expressed concerns, but since then, apparently, there was a meeting and things are going better. But I'd sort of like to hear from maybe the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office how things are at, maybe with IT as well.
Okay. In the future, we can put that on. Any other liaison reports? I will just mention that I was at the NACO National Convention a couple of weeks ago, and I will report out on that next week. It will be a very short report, but I will report on it next week. Is there any new business? Oh, we have some new business.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Just to let you know, there is no March joint city-county school meeting. I know you're all disappointed.
I'm disappointed.
For next Tuesday evening. There will be an April one, but no March joint meeting.
Not school, city-county meeting.
City-county, sorry.
That's fine.
No Tuesday city-county meeting. That's fine.
Yes. Thank you for letting us know that. Is there any old business? Okay. With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.